Good evening. I would like to call to order the 10:14-15 School Committee Meeting. The time now is 7:00 PM. The October 14th, 2015 School Committee Meeting will be televised and recorded. Under the open meeting law, the public is permitted to make an audio or video recording of any open session at a public meeting. At this time, I would ask if anyone is recording tonight's meeting to please identify themselves.
Brian Woodson Prior.
Thank you, Mr. Foley. Our first order of business is the Pledge Allegiance.
If we can invite our recognized guests up to lead us. Let's move over here.
This way.
The Pledge Allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We could have our recognized guests stay right here. Madam Chair, if I may request a point of privilege to move Item 2 under Presentations, the appointment of our new Athletic Director into the recognition portion so that Principal Vogel and the high school staff and students can be recognized together.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Regan. Is there any comments from anyone on the board? Okay, so moved.
With us tonight are several, well, two staff members, our Principal Vogel of the Tewksbury Memorial High School and Katherine Adelsberger. First, beginning with recognition for Katherine Adelsberger. We have two students who have been recognized under the National Merit Scholarship Program. I think we have a proclamation to read for Katherine.
I do, yes. I have it. All right, I will read this for you. This is a resolution of recognition. Whereas Katherine Adelsberger is recognized by the National Merit Scholarship Program and Tewksbury Memorial High School for her exceptional performance on the 2014 PSAT exam, and whereas Katherine Adelsberger received a letter of commendation for her exceptional performance from the National Merit Scholarship Program, and whereas Katherine Adelsberger placed in the top 5% of more than 1.5 million students who took the PSAT exam in the fall of 2014, and whereas Katherine Adelsberger has brought great pride, recognition, and honor to herself, her parents, and family to Tewksbury Memorial High School and to the town of Tewksbury. Now therefore be it resolved that the Tewksbury School Committee applauds, honors, and recognizes the exceptional performance of Katherine Adelsberger.
Congratulations. Katherine, we would just say right there, to our members watching, our members of the School Committee and others, Aria Porzio, also a student of the Tewksbury Memorial High School, received that commendation through her PSAT scores too, so we commend her as well, and she's not with us tonight, but we'll make sure she gets that commendation from you. With us also tonight is our high school teacher, Brian Aylwood. Brian has done so much to build the community of the Tewksbury Memorial High School, the teaching staff, the student community spirit, as well as our sports program. Mr. Dick, I think we have a commendation to read for Brian.
It's a resolution of recognition for Mr. Brian Aylwood. Brian Aylwood has been a member of the Humanities Department of Tewksbury, Tewksbury Memorial High School since 1994. He's been a, he's a history teacher, Social Studies Department Chair, and academic leader, and is a dedicated teaching professional who cares about all students. Brian is also the Redmond varsity football head coach, includes students, includes students of all abilities, past and present, in the Tewksbury, in the Tewksbury Memorial High School program. Brian Aylwood's commitment stretches well beyond any classroom and happens outside the white lines of any field. Mr. Aylwood has made many contributions to the Tewksbury Memorial High School community by volunteering to serve as a leader on the NEASC accreditation committee, the MCAS rally captain, and motivational speaker, organizer of trips to the Massachusetts State House, and supports the TMHS Life Skills Program. And Mr. Aylwood has taken the lead in establishing a best buddies program at Tewksbury Memorial High School that we can all be proud of. Brian Aylwood has designed and collaborated with the Tewksbury Memorial High School staff to develop a summer reading program to meet the diverse needs of students. He has contributed countless hours to create a whole school list of 27 books selected to appeal to varying grade levels, interests, and content areas. And Brian Aylwood has united a whole school of staff and students to motivate and rally around the 2015 Summer Reading Program, and whereas Brian Aylwood celebrates the teaching staff in the accomplishments of 92% of student participation in the TMHS 2015 Whole School Summer Reading Program. And now therefore be it resolved that the Tewksbury Memorial, Tewksbury School Committee applauds, honors, and recognizes the many efforts of Brian Aylwood to meet the needs of all students at Tewksbury Memorial High School. Congratulations.
Ready to move on?
Thank you. Thanks for all you do.
Chrissy.
Congratulations.
All right. Thank you.
We have to be honest with the committee, Brian. You should know that today, as we were putting together the lengthy list of all the things you do for staff and students in the School Committee, we really struggled to fit it all on one commendation for you, so we're very appreciative of all you do. I know Principal Vogel, you must be very proud of your staff and students and what they represent for the town of Tewksbury, so thank you. And then, oop.
Mr. Francis.
I just want to say one thing too. I mean, I've been on this committee now seven years, and I know where we were with the Summer Reading Program, especially at the high school in the years past before Brian really took it over, and it is amazing to see the increase up to 92% participation. That's a direct bearing on your leadership at the school and all the staff and all the students and how you pull everybody together. Just a tremendous job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Is there any other comments from the School Committee members before we move on? Katherine, I guess what we'd like to say to you two is, on behalf of the School Committee, you exemplify what an academic excellence. We're so proud of you, what you achieved. You should be so proud. I'm sure your family is, the community is. To really receive that Merit Scholarship is really something to be proud of. You are definitely one of our shining stars here in Tewksbury, and we truly appreciate you being a leader in the academic excellence, so thank you so much, and please thank your parents as well, because I'm sure they had an important part in your success, your family, so thank you so much. We truly appreciate all your hard work here in Tewksbury. You're welcome.
And to round off the accommodations for Tewksbury Memorial High School, with us tonight is our newly appointed Athletic Director and Facilities Manager of the Tewksbury Memorial High School, Mr. Ronald Drewin. A letter went home to parents announcing Mr. Drewin's appointment, and I'd like to read just a portion because I'm not sure that everybody knows the lengthy career you've had with Tewksbury. Ronald Drewin is a resident of Methuen. Ron and his wife Carol have two daughters and a new puppy, I'm told. Alyssa is a freshman at Salem State College and also on the field hockey team, and Ally, who is a sophomore at Methuen High School, also plays soccer on the high school team. Ron has been employed with the Tewksbury Public Schools since 1999 as a physical education teacher at the John F. Ryan Elementary School, and has coached varsity baseball at Tewksbury Memorial High School for over 20 years. He holds a registered athletic administrator certification through the National Inter-scholastic Athletic Administrators Association, an undergraduate degree from Salem State College, is certified in K-12 physical education, and received his master's of education from Fitchburg State College in general education studies. Ron possesses a well-rounded background that makes him the ideal candidate for the Tewksbury Public Schools Athletic Director position and Facilities Manager of the Tewksbury Memorial High School. Let me just say that the process went like this. We posted the position. We had about 10 applicants that were actually qualified for the job. They interviewed the top three of those applicants that we felt were right for Tewksbury. Ron was the committee's number-one choice unanimously, so I'd like to welcome and honor you, Ron, as our Athletic Director for Tewksbury Memorial High School. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Best of luck.
Thank you.
Are there any comments from anyone on the committee? Any comments or? Thank you, Mr. Drewin, and we wish you all the best in your new role here in Tewksbury.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to turn it over to our student representative, Mr. Justin Petrie, to give us the high school report at this time.
All right, thank you. So, the best buddies club that Mr. Aylwood runs held an information session for parents last week and is readying themselves for their first large group event, an inclusive Halloween party at the high school on October 22nd. The class of 2016 reports that homecoming was a big success with Bobby Piccolo and Nicole Petherbridge being crowned as homecoming king and queen. Tewksbury apparel forms that they control are still in the works and will be available soon. The Students Against Destructive Decisions will be recognizing Teen Driving Safety Week and National Red Ribbon Week during the month of October. They are also planning a new student, a new student survey as a way to welcome these students into our school. Student Council will be selling breast cancer awareness items next week, and they are beginning to send out flyers for their fall leaf raking services throughout the month of November. This upcoming Friday, the Executive Board members will attend the Massachusetts Association of Student Council's Officer Shop Conference, in which our delegates will learn advanced leadership skills. I will actually be representing Tewksbury as a state board delegate by presenting a workshop on goal setting at the conference. And our National Honor Society recently sent out order forms for their Thanksgiving Day t-shirts, being sold for $15 each, and if anyone has not received a form, they are to be sent to Ms. Puma.
Thank you, Mr. Petrie.
And that concludes my report.
As always, a great thorough report. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna, at this time, we're going to move into our presentations for this evening, and our first presentation is from Mr. Gilbert, representing the Massachusetts Association of School Committees regarding our superintendent search. So, welcome, Mr. Gilbert.
Good evening. Good evening. So, the last time I was here, we talked about the makeup of the search committee, so I'd like to start with that, see if we can come to an agreement as to what the makeup of the search committee is going to be. And just to remind folks, there were four parents, one from each level. The parents are going to submit letters of interest to the Chair of the School Committee, four teachers. The teachers will submit letters of interest to the Union President. The, there will be one building principal selected by the building principals, two central office administrators/staff to be selected by the central office staff, two residents, community members, who, again, letters will be submitted to the School Committee Chair, a high school student selected by the high school student council, and a school committee member selected by the school committee.
Okay, so at this time, I'd like to open up to any of my colleagues. Does anyone have any questions, concerns regarding the suggested makeup of the search committee for the superintendent this evening?
Mrs. Miller? Thank you, Madam Chair. I had said it at the last meeting, and I just wanted to reiterate that one of the parents should have a child on an education plan, or one member of that committee should be able to represent the special education community.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Thank you. Are there any other comments or? Okay, so at this time, I think the first thing we should do is vote in the makeup of this search committee, and then we can take a second vote to vote in the School Committee member? Is that what you're looking for this evening?
That's fine.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gilbert. So, could I have a motion at this point to accept the search committee as proposed this evening by Mr. Gilbert?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
So, I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, to have the Superintendent Search Committee made up of four parents from all the different schools, as well as four teachers representing the different schools, two central office administrators, one principal, two community at large, one Tewksbury Memorial High School student, and one School Committee member. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. You have your makeup of the committee, Mr. Gilbert.
Good.
Okay, at this point, I guess if there's any interest, at this point, we'd like to nominate someone to be on the Superintendent Search Committee.
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate the Chair to be that representative for the School Committee.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, so I have a motion, and I have a second on the floor, to nominate the School Committee Chair to represent the School Committee on the Superintendent Search Committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. So, you have your makeup committee, Mr. Gilbert, and I look forward to serving on this committee with you.
Good. I will not be serving on the committee. You have in front of you tonight two things. One is a marketing brochure. This is ready to go to the printers with a couple of edits already that Ms. Johnson gave me earlier. Is there anything else that anybody has with regards to changes to the brochure, other than the selection criteria, which we're going to talk about in a minute?
Could you read for us? I don't know if everybody's aware of any edits that have come to your attention from the original document that we've been given.
Sure. So, in the page with the pictures on it? Under the community profile, in the next to the last paragraph, it says, "The largest public geriatric hospital in the country." I'm told that it actually is a chronic care hospital. So, we're just going to change geriatric to chronic care. On the other page, the name of the Trahan School is misspelled. I believe you need to put an E at the end of Louise. And I'm told that the Heatbrook Elementary School is pre-K-2 as opposed to K-2. I pulled the grades off the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's website, so. And that there are two high school assistant principals.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert.
Okay.
Are there any feedback or comments from any of the School Committee members at this time regarding the profile?
No good question.
Mrs. Miller?
Thank you. Where will you be distributing these brochures?
So, these brochures get mailed to every superintendent and assistant superintendent in Massachusetts. They go out also to every state school board and Administrator Association around the country, and to key schools of education that do graduate work with superintendents and administrators on the superintendency.
And you find the paper is more effective than an email?
Yes. We point people to our website. The brochure will also be soft copied on our website, so people can download it on their own as well.
Thank you, just so the folks at home know why we're paying for printing.
Yep.
That's all. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Any, Mrs. Regan?
I just see a couple of administrative and staff titles that we need to edit.
Okay.
I don't have to get into them now, but if we can get those edits to my, for example, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction and Assessment, and then Network Administrator as opposed to Director of. So, they're just, there's slight edits that I think we should get to you.
Sure. If you would email me those in the morning.
Okay.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Regan. Okay, so, Mr. Gilbert, are you looking for us to vote in the?
Yes, everything except the selection criteria, which we'll talk about in a minute.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that accepts the brochure as amended?
Second.
So, I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, to accept the Tewksbury Public School brochure with the edits proposed this evening. This, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. So, we're going to go talk about the selection criteria next?
Yes. So, during the month of September, focus groups were held consisting of administrators, staff, parents, community members. I visited each school building, met with small groups of staff, and we helped to open forums for parents and community members. Generally, residents and staff are very busy, and I certainly will say that those focus groups were not well-attended, but that's not unusual in this type of a process. We did, however, have 330 responses to the survey, the online survey, so we have a very good cross-section of the community in terms of responses to the, to the survey. And the breakdown in terms of the survey responses, primarily, they were from parents, about 84%, 10% from staff, 3% from district residents, 2% from students, and 1% were others, and the others, you can see on the report itself, the others generally are people who fell in more than one category. So, on the first page, we asked about the five issues that people would have a concern about, and the issues with the highest concerns were curriculum development instruction, 58%, educational leadership, 56%, communication with parents and community, 48%, academic standards, student assessment, 47%, building construction, facility management, 46%, technology and digital learning, 39%, financial management, 38%, and special education, 34%. Additional issues that were listed ranged from 23 to 8%, and approximately 26 people chose to add other comments, and those comments are available to you in the, in the full report. The second page, we asked about skills. The skills deemed most important were demonstrates success in improving or maintaining high academic performance, 55% of the respondents, demonstrates excellent communication skills, 50%, understands and recognizes good teaching, 39%, strong skills in development and implementation of the budget, 39%, experience in development of curriculum, 37%, demonstrates successful administrative experience, 35%, understanding of and experience with special education, 32%, knowledge to develop both short and long-term goals, 28%, success in acquiring outside funding, 27%. There are other, other skill sets that were listed ranged from 20% to 6%. So, as a result of the focus groups and what I've heard there, and the open-ended responses, the pieces that really came to the top were communication, leadership, academic standards, curriculum, and the condition of buildings, and special education. In the report, I've basically given out some of the responses I heard from folks in the focus groups in those areas, and then my recommendation to the School Committee for criteria to be used in screening candidates in priority order. Person who demonstrates excellent communication and political skills, demonstrates strong leadership skills, shows experience with development and implementation of curriculum, shows successful administrative experience, demonstrates success in improving and maintaining high academic performance, demonstrates success in building, construction, and facilities management, understands and recognizes good teaching, demonstrates success in community engagement and involvement, shows understanding of and experience with special education, and shows experience with educational technology and digital learning. That's my recommendation based, and you have all of the full responses in the report that I've given to you, the 20-page report that's attached.
Are there any comments from Mr. Gilbert at this time?
I just, I, Madam Chair, I just like how we're getting the community engaged in many, many different ways, and it just shows that it's a team effort, and we're looking for a lot of outside, you know, feedback, so we continue to go on that, that path with Mr. Gilbert's leadership, and I appreciate that. It's good to see the, our goals in there, and, you know, when you look at all the percentages, it's hit everything that we talk about each meeting day-to-day, so that's just a comment. So, I, I support his recommendations on the selection criteria at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Dick. Any other comments? Mr. Francis?
I agree with Mr. Dick, and I think it's very important as we move forward, we remain totally transparent through this entire selection process, and I appreciate you coming and keeping us informed on a monthly basis, having you come to our meetings and stuff, and I think that's very important, especially because for the community to know what's going on, and I think meetings like this, when you're coming forward and us discussing it, shows how we're trying to be transparent throughout the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Mr. Cutlass?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a question, Mr. Gilbert. I couldn't, I couldn't remember what you said. You send it out to all universities or on a nationwide search?
Not all. We have key graduate schools of education that do a lot of leadership work with administrators.
Across the country?
Across the country.
Okay, and you send it out to all of them and select them?
Yep.
All right, thank you. I think it's a very comprehensive list. I think it's very good.
Thank you, Mr. Cutlass. Mrs. Miller?
Thank you. I think this is outstanding. My colleagues are absolutely correct. I just wanted to know if there were any surprises for you when you went through this process?
I think, I will say this, coming in, what I had heard from, from you and from others, I thought that initially that the special education issue would have been higher in the response area, but after listening to community members and staff, the underlying issue is still what I've recommended as the number-one issue. It's communication. It's about communication skills. So, so there really wasn't anything surprising once I started to hear from the school community. Otherwise, you know, everything else is pretty much what I would have expected.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. So, at this time, is there anything else you would like from us?
I just need a motion to approve those selection criteria, and we will get this up on our website tomorrow, and the ad will hit Education Week next week, and we will be moving along. In reference to Mr. Francis's comments, you will not see me for a while, as I will be recruiting candidates and having those conversations, and there will not be a lot of activity for people to take in until we get to December.
I'll make a motion, Madam Chair, to accept the selection criteria.
Okay. So, I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, to approve the selection criteria as defined in the Tewksbury Public Schools brochure for the next superintendent of schools. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Okay, so just for a point of reference at this point, since we have approved the makeup of the committee this evening, the next step will be is we will be sending out letters to all the different departments. So, we'll send it out to the high school principal to recruit that Tewksbury Memorial High School student. We will send it out to the community, looking for two community at large. We will send it to all of our administrative team, asking them to define one principal as outlined by Mr. Gilbert. We will send it, a letter, to the central administrative office, looking for two people to represent that community, and we will send it out to all parents and guardians, looking for both, looking for parents from each school, as well as sending it to the president of our TTA, looking for four teachers to serve in this committee as well. And so, those letters hopefully will be out by the end of the week, and I encourage all those to get involved in this process. We'd love to see an outpouring of letters come in for people that would like to be part of this process, and we'll be putting more details in that letter, and we'll be getting it out to all the newspapers, as well as separate letters to the different departments that I discussed as well. So, again, we encourage everyone to get, this is a very important decision for Tewksbury, and we encourage all those to get involved. We'd love to see tons of letters coming in for people wanting to get involved in this process. So, thank you on that note. Okay, moving right along to the Citizens Forum. Do we have anyone wishing to speak this evening? Okay, not seeing anybody. We're going to go right over to our clerk, Mr. Cutlass, to present the minutes for this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll first move the minutes of September 30, 2015, regular School Committee meeting.
Second.
So, I have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the School Committee meeting minutes this evening. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well.
And I'll move the minutes of the September 30, 2015, executive session meeting.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, to approve the minute meetings for the September 30th executive meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well.
And on the payroll, I will move the payroll for the period ending October 8, 2015, the amount of $1,183,977.64.
Second.
So, I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, to approve the payroll period ending October 8, 2015. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well.
And on the payroll, I will move the payroll for the period ending October 8, 2015, the amount of $1,183,977.64.
Second.
So, I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, to approve the payroll period ending October 8, 2015. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Okay, moving right over to our consent agenda. Okay, moving right over to our consent agenda this evening. Does anyone wish to take anything off the consent agenda this evening? Not seeing anyone. Do I have a motion?
We'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
So I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, to approve the consent agenda this evening. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mrs. Riegen this evening to go over our staff reports.
Okay, thank you. Regarding some of the contents of the consent agenda, I'd like to update you on the National, the Northeast Professional Educators Network, all extravegans of this, first annual go at a public school regional PD approach. I'm really proud to say that Tuxbury got in on the planning stages and the development of this process. So I put into the packet the four flyers for the different, and they're called low incident group roles, meaning it's very difficult to host PD for one librarian or our just handful of art and music teachers. So joining a regional district approach like this for a very small membership fee of $500 for the entire year, we're able to now host these PD sessions, and if you looked at the titles and the types of sessions that are being hosted, quality professional development for all of these educators on November 3 off full PD day. And then what they get to also participate in is a facilitated networking, how different districts are running those programs. So we're very excited, this being our first annual go at this, and hope to report a great success of this new PD approach. Next, you had requested some information on the alternative pathways and what that meant, that email that we received from the, from DESI, on the district determined measures, otherwise known as DDMs. So let me just talk a little bit about that email. The Massachusetts Educator Evaluation System has four main components. It has the teacher rubric, and that are the standards that teachers are showing proficiency towards. Then it has the goals, the professional practice goal, as well as the student learning goal. So teachers are rated or evaluated on that rubric and their goal, meeting goal progress. There are two other components, and one of them is the student impact rating on learning. So this is a growth mindset, not only for the staff or the teacher, but also for the student, what growth is taking place as a result of the teacher or educator's role. That's the student impact rating, which includes standardized assessments, as well as district determined assessments. Those district determined assessments, depending on the role, can either be direct measures, which may be a benchmark test, which may be some type of assessment or writing rubric, or indirect measures for roles, for example, like nurses or guidance, that may have more of like a log system or visitations by students, some type of system that's showing their impact in their role on student growth and learning. That's what the DDM is all about. So first of all, every teacher has to have two measures, as I said, and they have to be common, either amongst the role or the grade level. Most teachers will have a standardized assessment set by the state, MCAS, or PAR, or something to that effect, but the second measure will be district determined. And if you look at this lengthy list, in 2014, we looked at all of the measures and assessments our teachers are already doing, or our support-related staff, guidance, nurses, and we created and compiled many more DDMs than even necessary, but said to the state, these are the measures we can use. We spent a good part of last year meeting with our TTA representatives to this committee to determine a student impact rating. We haven't got to that point yet. We haven't determined what the rating will be, not the standardized testing like MCAS. The state determined thirty-five to sixty percent growth is moderate, less than thirty-five, and this is for the teacher, is low, greater than sixty is high. It's up to us to negotiate with our TTA membership what will be that growth rating on all of these DDMs. It's a big task, and that is the task still ahead of us. So if you look at just the first page of this DDM list in the blue, it's hard to read, but has a district reached a negotiated or ratified agreement on the student impact rating? And the answer to this point is still no. We're in very good company with most districts in the state on that regard. So what the state put out, and this was that email that we talked about at the last meeting, was alternative pathways to the DDM approach. They offered districts three alternative pathways. Pathway one was simply more time, and the reason for more time is that in order to rate the student, the teacher, for student impact, you needed a two-year length of data on the same common assessment. So we need that time. We need that time to look at that and then determine, well, what is moderate growth? What does that look like for our students? And what the district chose, and it was a survey, not a letter, which I wasn't able to supply you with the letter because we had to fill it out online, was pathway one, which was extended time, as well as the availability of looking at potential hybrid solutions. For example, pathway two was appealing to some teachers, a second student learning goal. So pathway three was appealing to some teachers, providing more evidence to the principal on a one-on-one basis, the educator to the principal during the evaluation process, evidence to show that students are learning and growing within the class. The key here is on page three of six in the Quick Reference Guide, professional judgment is truly what comes into play because every classroom is different. It's easier to look at an MCAS assessment and judge student growth, because that's a system that's been in place for a while. It's a little bit more difficult to look at one classroom versus another with very different student makeup and judge, well, what is the cut score for growth? So that's something that we have, that's a lot of work still ahead of us. What we now have agreed to with the state is that by school year 2017, at the end of next school year, many of our staff will be given a student impact rating of either low, moderate, or high, and then by 2018, school year 2018, all of our staff, including administrators, will have a student impact rating that feeds into their evaluation. If you look at, and please stop me if you have any questions as I'm going, it's a lot of information. If you look at the page six of six, it's the Quick Reference Guide to actually establishing the final evaluation rating for a staff member. So it reads across and vertically. So for example, if a teacher is rated proficient and you go across, you can see that if they have a moderate or high impact rating on student learning, they stay in that two-year self-directed growth plan. And keep in mind, it's a growth mindset evaluation system, growth for the educator, growth for the student. If they get a needs improvement, regardless of their impact rating on scores, either way, they are in a directed growth plan. So it really, the impact is on the teacher goal setting, their rubric, as well as student learning, and that sets the growth plan for the educator forward. So in summary, we have another year to explore our impact rating. That will give us this year and next year for two full years of data compiled, and we'll be able to rate most, I think, of our teachers in two thousand, school year 2017 on the impact rating portion. We have yet to begin the discussion on the student survey portion of the educator evaluation system, much like many districts, which will be the next step. Okay? Any questions on this report?
Mr. Francis, I mean, Mr. Cutlass?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Now, I know I was on that model educator evaluation, and that took a long time. So you have a committee of teachers and union reps that are working on this?
There are grade-level representatives of the union who have volunteered their time to work together with me on the whole, first of all, educating all the teachers on the whole system. It's a lot to wrap the head around. We have to wrap our head around just the evaluation, the rubric, and teach point, and now the DDM portion of it, and then hopefully they'll stay on for the student survey portion as well.
Okay, all right, that was all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cutlass. Mrs. Miller?
My only concern is I can see how much work you all have done. It's tremendous, and it's multiple years, and that can't be diminished. My concern is how much time this takes for teachers to do this sort of stuff.
You know, and that's a really good point, Jane. I think the work has to be relevant. I mean, establishing an assessment has to be relevant to their teaching and learning for students. We don't want to just throw an assessment at students and say, geez, like, for example, a final. Is a final a good assessment of student growth? We're not sure. But is a rubric that talks, that a pre-assessment, for example, in student writing, for example, at the high school, many teachers teach many different courses. How do you come up with one common assessment for our technology teachers? Well, what they came up with was a rubric for writing, and they pre-assess the student's writing, given a prompt regarding the content of the class, and then they mid and post-assess the writing. So they're looking at writing growth. That's a very good DDM. It's valuable, but you're right, we don't want to spend time developing assessments that aren't valuable to the learning in the classroom. So we look at first what we already do. Are they valid? Are they relevant? Are they good for our kids? And then should we continue to use them or develop something else? I think teachers right now, now, don't forget, they also have to track their data and then report their data to their principal. It's very time-consuming. We've developed trackers through, I have a couple of teachers out here in the audience tonight who'll tell you the wonders of our Google trackers that we've developed and allowed them to use, but they're not easy tools. You know, again, we're trying to make the work relevant for student learning and easy for teachers to roll into their evidence.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller.
Okay. Well, another long-term process has been the report card renovation, and when I say it's a report card renovation, it really is not. It's the transition of using Aspen Gradebook at all grade levels, and it's really another complex system of using a new tool changes the outcome of reporting. And in that process, last year, we had several teachers that volunteered their time yet again to look at comment codes at all grade levels, K through 12. We currently have them categorized by content area, as well as homework, assessment in general. All grade-level teachers have fed into those comments that are now coming home on those progress reports. That's what you see in front of you is a sample of a progress report that reflects the courses that K to four teachers now have in their grade book. So again, the report that comes out is very driven by the software we use in Aspen Gradebook. So teachers then are now developing, I think if you remember, we came before you on the renovation of our kindergarten report card, the two semester rubric-based report card. Jan Fuller and her team presented how they got to this, the reason that they put these standards on here, they're really moving towards a standard-based report card. This is the result of what it will look like coming out of Aspen, and we'll see, parents of kindergarten students will see that in semester one. And on our October 28 meeting, I hope to have for you what our final K, I mean, I'm sorry, grade one through four report card will look like as a result of Aspen Gradebook. I've met with representative parents from our PACs at the four elementary schools. I'm getting their feedback. We're renovating that a little bit based on their questions. We're creating a grading guide that helps parents understand not only the school committee policy on the A-plus, I mean, the A, the B-plus, the A-minus, et cetera, but what a 4-3-2-1 really is how it's quantified, because we have a rubric, a three, 4-3-2-1 rubric for kindergarten for grades one, K-1, 2, but then a grade system for three on up, and we really need to sort that out with parents to understand. So it's a long process transitioning through grade book, because it then, just by default, changes the way the reports look. Again, I think it's going to be an ongoing informational piece that I continue to report and show you. All right, and then Dr. O'Connor asked that we include this email from the desktop of Mitchell Chester, Commissioner of Education, regarding grant funding. I just want to report that no government shutdown occurred, no impact on any of our district grants occurred. In fact, as of today, Helena Bettencourt sent this update saying that Congress has passed a continuing resolution that avoided a shutdown of the federal government. The department has received our October award letters for Title I, Title II-A, IDEA, Perkins, and Nutrition Awards, so there should be not any delay in processing school breakfast and lunch reimbursements to districts. Just for information only. Lots of updates. Let's see, the TMHS Theater Company yard sale on October 17 is at the Congregational Church. The TMHS class of 2017-18 are hosting their comedy show on October 19. TMHS Adaptive Ski Club is selling 22-inch Purr Reese, delivery after Thanksgiving. And the high school Friday night football game update, it was rainy, went very well. As you already know, I'm hoping that TMHS was very victorious over Andover with a 29 to 12 score. No incident occurred, all went very well, we're very happy to say, report on that. Let's see, today, the North Street School had the fire, the safe fire trailer, and I was there to witness that. The students did an awesome job picking out areas of the kitchen that were unsafe and possible fire hazards, and then they went through the, and the students led right into, well, what if there's smoke in our bedroom when we're sleeping at night? And they went into that bedroom area of the trailer, they brought on the smoke, and the students all escaped unharmed and learned how to be junior fire rangers and point out safety issues in their own homes. I'm sure they all went home tonight, and pointed out the salt pepper shakers did not belong over the stove. Tuxbury Police Department Substance Use Prevention and Education Week is next week, the week of October 19. There will be on October 18, a candlelight vigil at the Tuxbury State Hospital, followed by programs in the schools for grades five through 12, and an educational program for the seniors at the Senior Center, 11 to 12 p.m. Coordinating poster contests for grades K through four, sponsored and by the Tuxbury Education Foundation, as well as the Tuxbury Police Department, have been made available to every classroom teacher, as well as emailed to all homes. There is a variety of contests for every grade level, including a video contest for the high school students. And on October 20, at 6 o'clock p.m., the Prep Prevention Resources and Education for Parents is being held at the Ryan School. And then finally, in my updates, the 17th Annual Community Safe Halloween will be hosted by the Tuxbury Police Department on October 25, from 10 a.m. to 1 p.m. at the John F. Ryan Elementary School. I think that's it. I think I have more news about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Riegen.
I really don't have, I'm going to talk about the special town meeting when we get to our old business, but I just wanted to let you know for the October 28, I'm going to have an update on all the grants. I know we were waiting for that information, which we got, which was wonderful, that nothing got cut, and I'm also going to have an update on the financials. Our town auditor is away this week, so when she comes back next week, I'm hoping that she can incorporate the numbers that are going to be added to the budget, so I can have those all incorporated as well at the end of October.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Matthews. Okay, moving right along to our committee reports. Mr. Cutlass or Mr. Francis, do we have anything for the high school building committee?
Nothing to report tonight.
Okay, thank you. For the Tuxbury Education Foundation, as everyone knows, we're in full swing of the auction, so tickets are on sale. If you have not got your tickets, please get your tickets before it sells out. It's a great event, and then also they're continuing to welcome all donations. So I know people are out in the community soliciting those donations now, but if there's anyone out there, you can always drop your donation off to the community service office as well. So definitely get those tickets for the auction. The Tuxbury Special Ed PAC Executive Committee, the next future meeting is scheduled for 10:29 at 8:45 a.m., right in the center school. They also wanted to let everyone know that the most recent Sarah Wood presentation, the link that was given is not currently working. However, they're looking to update that, and as soon as it becomes available, they will be letting everybody know and sending out an email. And then the basic workshop will be held on 10:23 from 9 to 11 a.m., right here at Tuxbury Memorial High School. And Mrs. Moore, do we have anything to report on the wellness committee?
Yes, we're coordinating our first meeting for the school year. It'll be at the end of the month, the week of October 26. Okay? Haven't nailed it down yet.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Okay. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Dick to review our policies, changes, and proposals, and adoptions this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, we have eight policies, really one policy that we're, that has a revision, and the other seven are just being adopted from MASCS policies. So this is the first reading. Mrs. Palmino, myself, and Dr. Connor are on the policy committee. You can reach out to us if you have any comments. But the first policy that we're revising is the ADF Wellness Policy. The BBBC, BBBC School Committee Member Resignation Policy is being adopted. The BBBC, BBBC School Committee Member Resignation Policy is being adopted. BDC, Appointed Committee Officials. CB, School Committee, School Superintendent. EBAB, Pest Management Policy. GCCD, Domestic Violence Lead Policy. JBA, Student to, Student to Student Harassment. And then JC is the Attendance Area. So those last seven are being adopted. Next, we will have the second reading, or the final reading, and we will move forward with adopting those policies as is. Any questions or anything like that?
Does anyone have any comments, or? Nope, thank you, Mr. Dick.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along to old business. The first item I'll send over to Mrs. Regan is the Alice Training.
Yes, for all parents watching, and I hope many are, because it's very important that people are aware that we are hosting our Alice Parent Information Night on October 21st, Wednesday night, here at the high school auditorium at 6 p.m. I just wanted to update the committee as well, that our district security team has met to revise our Alice Presentation Training and Student Drill portion. We intend to present that schedule of all of the drills and information sessions at our parent presentation. I want you to know as well, we've had two parent forums now, where I've met with representatives from the Ryan, the middle, and the high school to revise how we go about doing the drills with our students at developmentally appropriate levels at all of our schools, and most recently met with our K-4 parent representatives to get their eyeballs on what our plan was for the elementary school presentations and drills, and they really feel that we've looked at, dotted all the i's and crossed the t's, if you will, and thought about all of the scenarios. I think right now, when we present to our parents, we've also, we'll put into our email and our One Call Now! blast, students are welcome to come with their parents. Parents have said, much like going to a movie that might be a little above my child to watch, I will watch it with them first, discuss it, and then they feel better prepared when they have their presentation and drill at the school. So we want all parents to know that their children, if they choose, are welcome to come with them at our parent night on October 21.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Regan. Do we have any comments? The one comment I'd like to say is that we did get a lot of feedback, and, you know, we like to tell the community, there was some feedback, and we did have, we did have some criticism with the Alice trainings last year, just in relation to how some students responded. So I want to commend our administration team for going out and welcoming those parents to be part of the solution on what are different ways we could do it. We were very successful at the high school, very successful at the Wynn School, but we did have some concerned parents at the Ryan, and I think it should be commended that we took the time, not only to meet with them after the incident last year, but we carefully made them part of the process this year to give feedback and to tell us ways that they think we might be able to improve, and they did that with various members of the district security team and the police department. And I think that everyone's going to be pleasantly surprised at some of the great changes that will come as part of this parent meeting. So I do encourage the community, and certainly those that had concerns or questions, to really make the time, mark those calendars, and make October 21 on your calendar, so you can see exactly what your child and your, the students will be, what the students will, what will be involved in that training, what the students will be exposed to. And it's a perfect opportunity for both students and parents to express at that meeting. So I encourage everybody to go to that meeting.
Great, thank you. In front of you also is the 2014 October 1 unofficial, actually, this is our unofficial preliminary October count enrollment. It's a breakdown of enrollment by our teachers and by our class. I am very, very happy to say that no classes in grades K through 8 have more than 25 students. I know this was a concern, especially at the Wynn School as of last year, so it's wonderful to report that to you. Our official October count will be reported at the next school committee meeting on October 28.
Yep. As you all know, we had our special town meeting last week, and on behalf of the school department, I want to thank the community members for coming out and voting. All of our articles for the school were approved. We had multiple articles that were on there. One of the very first ones was blended in with the rest of the town. The school was voted in $681,706 to go into our local appropriation, of which $200,000 is going to be part of capital outlay. That's going to be for recurring textbooks each year, so we don't get behind, we can stay on top, and the money this year is going to be used for math K-6, right? Textbooks, yeah. There was $360,000 that's going into the school health insurance line. It's to make up, last year, it went into a revolving account for cafeteria and for the grants, so the town was just taking that back. And there is six, sorry, $18,607. We have an IEP for a student that needs a one-on-one aide, so we had to get another aide, so that's going to be first step one aide, and then we have $102,000 that's going to be part of the operating budget. That's going to be due to some of our summer services per IEP went over what we had budgeted for, and maintenance of the buildings is down, and then our legal bills are higher than expected this year. Another article we had approved was $207,500 for one-time funds, and with those funds, we're going to be getting an additional fleet truck, a F-350 with a sander and a plow. We're hoping to use the sander to supplement for DPW, so we can do some spot sanding during the day.
It's not going to smell this way.
No, it would be lovely if it didn't. We have pipe work at doing that needed to be done for $15,000. We got a, or we're going to be getting a water tank for the back of one of the trucks that's about $3,500 to just be able to use here at the high school to do some of the islands. When we went out with MSBA, we weren't allowed to put the sprinklers system in, because it would have taken down on points. We have a feasibility study at the center school, which the central office is located at, and we have an architect that has already agreed to come in and do the study on the whole building. And then we have two hot water heaters, one at Ryan and one at Wynn, and thankfully, this money got approved, because both of those hot water heaters have gone. We knew they were on the fence, and within the last couple of weeks, they both went. We also had Article 7 awarded, and that was money that was previously awarded, and we had a remaining balance of $41,800 and approximately $16, and we had used those funds for cafeteria tables at the elementary school level. When we went to go order all of the tables, they had about a two-week window where there was a 38% discount, so that's why we had the money left in there. And so we asked them, we asked the community to change the name of the warrant article instead of elementary cafeteria tables to district-wide furniture. I've gone around to pretty much all of the elementary schools. There's a lot of furniture in the classrooms and different areas within the schools that are, that really need to be replaced, a lot of the desks, a lot of the tables, so we're going to be using the funds for that. And then lastly, this was part of the Community Preservation Fund. It was awarded $202,125 to renovate Strong Field. And I will tell you that we went through all the proper 30B, and Shrewsbury Landscaping started today. They should be done in a week. They're doing all the sodding and all the aerating of the field down there, so they've been working on it. And again, they're going to be done in a week. We are going in with the town for the fence. We're going out to bid for the fence. But again, I'd love to thank the community for coming out and voting with the school.
Thank you, Mrs. Matthews. Any comments? Okay, moving right along to new business. Right up to you, Mrs. Regan, item number one.
At your request is the NASDAQ proposal. The district received a proposal from NASDAQ to complete a study of special education programming and service delivery for the Tuxbury Public Schools. If you look at the proposal, NASDAQ is saying they will review prior studies, including our Gagliata Report and our Tuxbury Special Education PAC 2009 Parent Guardian Survey. They'll review in-district program best practices and review the district's placement of students in and out of district programs, and then conduct data gathering onsite interviews. The study will take approximately two months to complete and to report on their findings. The cost is $9,800, as the district receives a 20% affiliate discount. At the recommendation of the superintendent, the school committee is asked to vote on the proposal as presented.
And before you vote, I just want to update. I know you asked me about the funds last time, and I did sit with Mr. Pelletier, and we did go through the grant, and the funds are going to go through a special education grant.
I'll make a motion to approve the study, NASDAQ study.
Second.
So I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, to approve the proposed study of special education program service delivery that will be provided by NASDAQ. The total amount would be $9,800. Also, if there was additional work to be done, as noted in the contract, it would be $185 per hour, but that would be in addition to what we're actually asking for, which hopefully would not be the case. But, so it is the total of $9,800. Do I have a motion? Okay, so I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, to approve the NASDAQ proposal with, which is the study's special education program service delivery. This requires a roll call vote.
To you, Madam Chair, yes, discussion, I.
Sure.
So on the $185 per hour over and above what's approved, would that, would they come back to us to?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. I was just wondering if that, if that way.
Yes, they would. The vote tonight is the $9,800.
Okay, thanks.
Do I have a motion?
Yes, I'll make the motion to approve the NASDAQ special ed study.
So I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, to approve the NASDAQ study regarding the special education program service delivery. This requires a roll call vote. So, Mr. Dick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass?
Aye.
Mr. Francis?
Aye.
Mrs. Miller?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye as well. So, Mrs. Regan, if you could just keep us informed of when that study may start and when that will take place, that would be terrific. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the Title I Year End Report. This is an annual Title I Year End Report submitted by Mr. George Paul, our Title I Director. The information is distributed to both parents and guardians. The district has two schools determined to be eligible in Title I, the Heathbrook and the North Street. For fiscal year 2016, our Title I funding increased a few thousand dollars, and the district will receive $67,337 for Title II-A staff development. Okay, that's for informational purposes. See, the Middle Six District Attorney Truancy Letter, this is an annual letter that the district attorney puts out. It's signed by both the district attorney, Mary Ann Ryan, as well as the superintendent, and then individually signed by each school principal. The principals have distributed the letter regarding truancy to parents and guardians. I want you to also note on the back, there's definitions of what truancy and absence in the law, different aspects of the law, information for parents to read and process these that schools might take. So I want to thank Mr. Dick, Attorney, for their support. School attendance is key. I mean, they say being there is 80%, right? It's absolutely critical that students are at school, and we appreciate parents' support in getting their children to school timely, one-time, every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Regan.
Sports?
Moving right to school committees of interest. I'm going to start this evening with Mrs. Miller. I have nothing this evening, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Francis.
I have nothing this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Cutlass.
I don't have anything, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Dick.
I'm sorry.
The Chair has nothing as well. Future school committee meetings, our next school committee meeting is scheduled for October 28, 2015, and as future agenda items, we have the review and the assessment result analysis of the 2015 MCAS in Park, which will be on a future agenda item.
Our goal is to report on both the assessments at our November 18 meeting. Hopefully, all results will be together, and we'll be able to compile good analysis. I'm optimistic, but cautiously optimistic, I should say, we're waiting for that result to come in. I have some preliminary data, but it hasn't really been publicly shared. Not, if we don't have all the data, we'll at least be able to give some preliminary summaries.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Regan. So, Mrs. Johnson, if you could just please make a note that the November 18 meeting will be the analysis for the MCAS in the Park, that would be terrific. Mr. Francis?
Madam Chair, I just have one question, Mrs. Regan. I know you might have mentioned it the last meeting. When is the expected date that DESE is supposed to make a judgment on what assessment they're going to go with?
It's, it's late November, mid-November. We're hoping sooner than that even. There's a public comment period once they release the data, but then we're expecting, at the very latest, we're told early December, but we expect a something in mid-November.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Second. So I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. We will see everybody, our next scheduled meeting, October 28. Thank you.